May I have a motion that the closed meeting be closed and that the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
abstaining. Now if you'd please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I believe we have some recognitions.
Yes, sir. We do have a recognition tonight. I would like to invite our good friends from the South Hill Methodist, United Methodist Church to step up to the podium for recognition. They are the first church that we have had to fully join us in partnership for wraparound services to support young students who need some additional help and mentoring, I guess would be the best way to put it. They had, they have now been doing this for two years, and they doubled the numbers of students that they had come in from the first year to the second one. Both years, the program has been very successful. This year, not only successful from the perspective of doubling the numbers of students, but also from the perspective of getting some additional recognition from the charge conference. And as a way of trying to encourage other schools, other areas, churches in other areas to also participate, I've invited the minister and the one who in the church has been taking a good part of the responsibility on to come and introduce themselves and talk about the program and show the video that I think is an award-winning video. So if you will, welcome our guests, and I'll let them speak on behalf of the program.
I'm Reverend Brian Siegel, pastor at the South Hill Methodist Church. We were excited for this project to be started. For Mr. Nichols, give that dream vision a couple of years ago, and somehow we managed to get started off quickly. We received some grant funding to get going from our church and courses. Nancy Merrill, who is so strange in the school system, is running our program and doing a fantastic job. So this year, we had more students, and we have some new students.
We serve, this year, we service 14 students. We did not all need to stay. We just wanted to go over there and pass on the heat, and then our student, which was terrific. And the partnership with schools was wonderful. Schools very cooperative, and has really helped a lot.
And we have Ms. Eisenhower as principal of the school. I don't know if she has anything she wants to share about it or not, but taking her-
Here we go. Yes. And it's not us, it's the whole partnership, the teachers and the students and the parents and administrators, and then volunteers that do this program. But the pass rate for our students, when we start, fourth grade, it increased to 83% pass rate for the S.O.L., and fifth grade to 100%.
Thank you very much.
So the video, we were, our bishop at the Virginia Angel Conference at the South Hill Methodist Church spotlight several ministries throughout the conference each year, and this one was chosen as one of five ministries throughout the whole state that have highlighted at our Angel Conference the past weekend. And we were the first one shown, so we wanted to start with the kids. So not an award-winning video, but a dish shot by a award-winning videographer.
Yet, yet.
Yep.
While we're waiting for the video to come up, I'll just share that it is a need, not just for the academics. Go ahead.
So for me, the concept of glory sightings is a celebration of where we see God's people at work in the community around them. I think this fits that definition. You know, none of this is done for us, it is all done for the community.
SHEEP stands for South Hill Educational Excellence Partnership, which is our church partnering with South Hill Elementary School, which is not far down the road.
Well, the SHEEP partnership was a brainchild of the school superintendent.
The vision for what I call wraparound services and for South Hill Methodist Church moving into the SHEEP partnership is simply that there are so many needs among our students, The vision for what I call wraparound services and for South Hill Methodist Church moving into the SHEEP partnership is simply that there are so many needs among our students, particularly our elementary students, to get a very firm foundation.
Fourth and fifth grade students that are chosen by the teachers come here by bus, and we help them with their homework, we do some recreation, we are working on dealing with feelings and how to handle bullying, and we also absolutely bring in the Word of God.
None of these students are part of our church. This is truly reaching to the community to provide something very needed for those that are in. The families and the children, what we've seen is really kind of a remarkable change in some of the behaviors of the children.
When you hear that child say, "Oh, I've got it! Now I understand!" It's everything you want, you know, better than pay, it's just everything.
We have seen immediately that the students that were selected have had academics strengthened that, of course, is very helpful to them. I believe I'm correct in saying that last year, for the first time, they passed all of their SOL tests.
I was able to reach out to the Common Table grant process, and we were approved for that grant. So that provided our startup funding, and we were also approved to be part of the Administrative Accelerator Program, which gave us a lot of information about how to recruit volunteers and talk about securing other sources of funding and having publicity and, you know, several different workshop ideas like that, and that was extremely helpful to us.
We could not have had this program without the grant from the United Methodist Conference.
I really would love to see this grow significantly. I would love to be able to have as, however many students need the program, to be able to be part of the program. What I think what this program has shown is there is a good idea that's needed for the community. Sometimes amazing things happen in a short period of time.
So that dream of being able to give, provide this for as many students as possible that are needed is, at this point, determined entirely by volunteers. More volunteers, the more students we can get. So volunteer, or anybody that might want a volunteer, have them call us, and they can be part of the program.
So you have volunteers outside of the church as well that are coming in and-
Anybody who has background check in and wants to be there with kids is walking along the hall.
How did you recruit the students?
They are chosen by their teachers.
Okay.
I identified all the teachers as those who need the most assistance, because parents are not wanted, and they, they're devoted to this.
What days of the week do you meet?
Monday through Thursday.
And the times?
Right after school until six.
And when I first started talking with the churches about this two years ago, you know, we understood the issue of volunteers, and they went ahead with four days a week from the very beginning, but some of the other churches that were considering it suggested, well, what if we could only do it one, or what if we can do it two? You never know how much of a difference it can make in the life of a child who goes home and they don't have support mechanisms that might be available, that are available, obviously, here to help with many things. And when we're living in a day and time when there are ample gangs and whatnot trying to infuse those children and get those assimilated into their culture, this is a very positive option that we would love to have throughout the county.
Are there any resources that you're in need of now, other than volunteers?
Well, right now, we're grant-planted. That's a little grant we'll eventually take off, because it's time for us to start up funding. We do have, through those grants, this year, we have psychologists and councilors who came in and did group sessions with students and the families. That counselor had to pay for, of course, but there was no charge for families. We saw the picture of what 4H was in South Hill Elementary, knows the school that doesn't have it, but the students have done the SHEEP yet. So there's some really new partnerships to happen. I wonder if all of them will come. But we have a lot of, we have a lot of church and church who can buy snacks, can buy other stuff, resources, so, yeah, we won't refuse other resources.
Mr. Honeycutt?
I'd just like to make a comment. Speaking, Ms. Shep, who I had in fourth grade, who helped mentor me into the person that I am today, it's good people like her that have been in my life, the reason why I feel like I have succeeded in life. And being a part of that and just watching her and being able to sing beside her in the choir every Sunday, and just hats off to her because she's done an incredible job, and she's put up a lot of her time and emotions into it, and Brian for leading, it's just, it's just remarkable to see how the kids interact. So I just want to say thank you.
Eventually, I would like this to go to at least have possibly a paid person who didn't contribute, or helped that company that's not there. The grants we have is a little bit difficult to build, because down the road, we need some help.
And I am looking forward to the opportunity to come on one Sunday morning and say thank you to the church for the support, because it is very, very meaningful to those who are receiving it.
This video was not even to be shown publicly until after yesterday, so it's seen before I do a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on then, if I will-
Yes, sir.
-to our report and informational items. I think all of you are aware, and the public's aware, that the General Assembly did finally come to some conclusions about the state budget. We needed to actually wait until we had all of the information from that state budget before we could finally pass ours, and we have had a good chance to look at this information that's come from the state. We are in a position to pass the budget as you had approved it earlier, and the Board of Supervisors had approved it with some of the additional personnel that you passed on at our last May budget meeting. So you have, you can wait until next Monday night if you choose to go ahead and pass it, or we have it on here as an action item tonight, and since we've already passed it and there are no real modifications, we can finalize it tonight. If any have any questions on that, then I'll be glad to answer them.
We will have to do a minute gentleman.
Okay. Also, at our special call meeting, we had some presentation by the architect, Mr. Bill Upton, and his staff. We do have more information that, again, we'll be looking at as far as the costs related to that, and we've had some time for you all to be looking at that information. Basically, we're in a position that for the budget that the Board of Supervisors has given us at date for $100 million, we will not be in a position to have an auditorium. We will not be in a position to have some of the other options, the fieldhouse, on the athletic fields, we would need to forego the extra gems that were listed as needed, and we will need to look at reducing the size of the career and technical centers that we have built in for the six career centers. And it also is putting us in a position that we're only looking at planning for 1,300 students at the high school and 1,100 students at the middle school, which is basically where we are now, so there's not room for growth. And that's what we'll have to work with unless we are able to go out and find some other funding to support. I have talked with Microsoft, and we are looking to McBeep that is willing to work with us on raising some funding for some of the options as the community might be interested through donations and tax deductions through McBeep. They will be finalizing that next week when we have our meeting, whether that will be an option, but they seem very positive about that at this point. So that's where we are on update on the school building project. We are moving along, as I understand it, from the Highway Department. We should be soon in a position that they will be able to give us a final report on the bus lanes that would be necessary to go in, and whether that's possible or not, and anticipate that it will be done, but we'll get a better idea of what the cost of that will be. I'd also like to bring to your attention a request for you to consider over the next month. The teachers, through the Teacher Advisory Committee through the year, continue to talk with me about the issue that currently we have the longest school day for students, and at the elementary level, it has specific impact on students, younger students getting really tired, and at the secondary level, we are having 100 minutes per class, where the requirement of the state is 90 minutes, and most schools on four-by-four block have 95 minutes. It does not give us a lot of time for teachers to have any professional development activities inside of the contract hours and whatnot, and so we've taken their recommendation that we, they would like to see the, the school day for students reduced by 20 minutes, which would give them time that we could then look at some professional development activities for teachers and things, and if it works real well, we'll look and see what other considerations. Now, that would mean, this year, with that much time built in, we collected 16 days of extra over the 180 that's required because of the time per day. And so we were not needing to add days when we had, I believe it was 11 or 12 days missed for weather. And if we go past 12 days now, then we would have to start making up some time, but we were restricted on how we could make up time because of the amount of time or going beyond 40 hours a week for the aides and workers that are not listed as exempt employees. So we would be in a position to go back and look at some of that, and, you know, gives us more flexibility on that end as well. So with that recommendation, I have polled all of the principals, all of the results I got, there was an overwhelming support for the idea of reducing the day by 20 minutes, it would be at the end of the day, not at the beginning of the day, for the students, and giving the teachers that time for some other things to be done and building that in. That will be something for you to consider, and have questions, you can ask me about it through the month, and then we'll vote on it at the July meeting, unless you have questions now. All right, we have a report on the Title IV update from Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Mr. Nichols, last month, we brought you several title programs for approval tonight. I'm adding one additional one. This is a new one that came out this past year. We found out recently that we do need to submit this now at this time for July 1 for your approval, just to be able to move this money. It's Title IV. Last year, we transferred the money into Title II. This year, we're planning to transfer it into Title V. So if you look at the application on Board Docs, it looks very empty, because all we had to do was mark the box that we wanted to move this money. And once we get the actual allocation in September, then we will revise the Title V application to add this money to it, to beef up our professional development offerings for our staff. Are there any questions tonight? And I apologize for the short notice, but we will need this to be added to the documents that are approved tonight, because this is due July 1.
It's on the list for action items, but it's got to be done-
Yes.
-sooner than we usually like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd also like to give a maintenance update from Mr. Dalton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, Board members. I'd just like, we've had several maintenance projects going on throughout the year, some will come into a close, some are picking up. I just would like to take the opportunity now to kind of get you up to speed where we're at with a lot of those. We're coming to a close in June with the Energy Performance Project. The program is in the final stages now. We'll be having training on that in July. As you all know, if you've gone to any of the elementary schools, the floors are going in, they're ahead of schedule. We're using the LVT to cover all the asbestos flooring. We're done almost at La Crosse and Chase City, and then we'll be headed to Clarksville. The elementary school and secondary school roof projects are going simultaneously. Guthon's handling the secondary school roofs. Affordable Roofing is finishing up now at Clarksville, and will be moving here within a matter of weeks. The SHEE car rider drop-off loop was completed last week. I'm sure y'all have noticed the asphalt straw looks really good, and with that, we've also been approved by the Board of Supervisors last Monday night to move forward with Clarksville Elementary School, the central office here, and also South Hill Elementary School, fixing the potholes, fixing the cracks, resealing the parking lots, and restriping those, and that goes, that goes well with the loop project being completed, because we'll actually be able to mark that before the school year opens. We have decided to renew, this is our last year without sending out an RFP, we've decided to renew our grounds contract with Green Acres for the upcoming school year of 2018, 2019. Of course, we'll have to send in an RFP next year, as we could only roll it over for two years after the RFP. The only action item that I have tonight, and then I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions, is that South Hill Elementary School has, has requested that we have their TVs, they have the older tube-type TVs and VCRs mounted up on the wall in the metal brackets, and we'd like to have those declared surplus so that we may remove those and eventually sell them. And we would like to recommend that you do declare those surplus tonight in order, in order for us to move those items. Any questions?
So that's the CTE surplus?
That, that would be, yes, sir, what SHEE has labeled CTE surplus.
So we have replacements, right?
Sir.
They're being replaced?
No, no, they just don't use them anymore with the Prometians and Interactive Boards that we have now.
They don't need them anymore.
Everything is done on those. They're much bigger, much clearer, so they just-
Nobody uses those old TVs anymore, VCRs.
Still like watching old movies.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank y'all.
All right. I'd also like to bring to your attention, one of the action items you'll be asked for tonight is that there was a overnight field trip request from the Bluestone High School YADAP group for a special program related to that, to YADAP in Farmville on July the 16th through the 20th, and we have a few students that have qualified and are going to be participating in that, because it's an overnight, it has to be approved by you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now. And if not, then I'm going to ask Ms. Alga if she would come with our next policy update. And you will notice, if you look at it in between, that this is a relatively thick one.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Nichols. I have this evening, a policy is GCBA-R. It's a regulation to our policy for staff hiring. As you know, recruiting teachers has become more and more challenging, much more difficult, and this is an incentive to try to get math, Spanish, and special education teachers recruited to the division. So at the advice of our board attorney, Mr. King, he has suggested that we include this regulation so that we are in keeping with what our plans are. So initially, we started out with a $2,500 incentive for 10 teachers, so I think we're going to probably meet that goal this year. We have hired several sped teachers looking for Spanish and also mathematics. So this policy, I'm giving this to you this evening for information, but also for action so that we can move forward. It states that we are looking to pay the first $1,500 in August when they begin, and then the second part will be the next August when they rejoin us for the $1,000. So that's what this policy is about. So any questions about that? And again, that's for action tonight as well. And then for information tonight, we have the Virginia School Board policy updates from the legislature for May of 2018. There are many, many policies. Some of them are minor changes, some of them are significant changes. I do want to call your attention to a couple of them. The first one is BBFA. We follow Option 2 because of the planning district that Mecklenburg falls under. We are planning District 13, so we're required by law to follow this particular policy option. There are two new policies in this batch, so to speak, and that would be GBB. And if you look under the explanation of revisions that the very first document on Board Docs, you will see that I've highlighted these. In yellow is when we are doing options, in green is when there is a new policy. So we have prohibition of abusive work environment is a new policy that they're adding, and then they're also adding a policy under college and career readiness. It was formerly a part of the guidance and counseling program for Policy IJ, so they've sort of split that. So now you're seeing a new policy, but much of the same information is included there. And then we also have employment of family members, which is Option 2 for GCCB, again, based on planning district, and then you'll see that under JGD and JGE. It's Options 1 and 2. In the past, we have always followed the disciplinary option, disciplinary committee option, which I have incorporated there. And the other option that we have is for compulsory attendance, Option 2, where the superintendent makes the decision, and not Option 1 for the school board. So that's, those are what I would call the highlights for all of these changes that we are facing at this point in time. Does anyone have any questions? It is for information this evening, so enjoy reading. I look forward to the vote in the July meeting.
And while you're up, there are, there is a policy that was presented last month.
That was, that would fall under, fall under Ms. Pfeffer, which was GAA.
Yeah.
Now, the one, the first one you spoke of, the GCBA-R, why is it both an information item and an action item tonight? Is there some-
So that we can move forward in getting these paid in August when they come.
Okay.
Just so that I can, there, a lot of the folks that we've hired, they keep asking me, and I don't have anything to give to them until we get this approved, so they're looking for some sort of a separate statement. It will not come in their contract. It will be a separate statement that is called an incentive bonus.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alga. Moving on, if you look in your, under your agenda in Board Docs, there is documentation about the VPSA reimbursement resolution, and there's a required board issue that will come up with that, that will be taken into consideration for next month. So that's for your information, and if you have any questions, it's the VPSA reimbursement every year. And then one of the items that we have had some discussion and we are going to bring back for- for you to have any further discussion before vote tonight, but it was presented last month, is the Code of Conduct and Attendance and Secondary Handbook. And Dr. Brian Matney will be bringing that information. You'd had requests, some questions on back to your attention.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Chairman Ritchie, Vice Chair Bailey, Mr. Nichols, good evening. I come before you tonight to ask your approval of the draft of, if I may begin with, the Secondary Student Handbook for the forthcoming 18-19 academic year. You will note that an addition has been made based on your input on the 21st of March, and that deals with the delivery of food to students by parents and limiting those deliveries to the child's assigned lunch period so as to minimize disruptions to class and maintain the integrity of instructional time. We would also ask that you reinsert a previously approved proviso under book bags, which stated that book bags are to be placed in lockers upon the student's arrival to school. This one sentence was, we found, included specifically in the handbook approved by the Board in the summer of 2017. This is a request supported by the Board Safety Committee, our Division's Teacher Advisory, and such support was again reiterated in a meeting with secondary principals last week. Principals were able to report anecdotal instances from this school year where forbidden items entered and made their way through the building via book bags. They similarly reemphasized the stumbling blocks and tripping hazards that the book bags continue to pose in our small classrooms and the impediment they present to the flow of traffic in tight hallways and corridors during class changes. Principals suggested that the removal of backpacks from classrooms and hallways would afford them and their teachers a peace of mind that would allow them to better and more fully focus on their lessons and student engagement. Principals have also assured us that each campus has enough available lockers for each individual student to have his or her own. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Dr. Matney. Parkview Middle School will have enough lockers to accommodate the number of students?
Yes.
Okay. The policy as written now is going to state that students can bring backpacks to school, but upon arriving at school, it has to stay in their locker.
Yes.
And it cannot be used from classroom to classroom?
Yes.
Does that include sport bags, large bags that are carried like satchels, any large bag?
I think the spirit of the request on the part of the principals and the teachers is anything that would fall in the family of book bags, string bags, duffel bags.
Okay, no string bags, no book bags, no athletic bags?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? I think that's it. Thank you.
We would also ask your approval of the draft of the Code of Student Conduct for the coming academic year 2018-19. Again, this proposal includes a proviso that book bags and the like are to be placed in lockers upon the student's arrival to school. Thank you.
Were there questions? Mr. Matney?
Dr. Matney, I do have one quick question. Were there any revisions made to the cellphone policy?
No, sir. The principals and those who gave us counsel on potential revisions were quite comfortable with the policy as it exists status quo.
So the policy is stated as?
The policy is stated on, let's see, page 24 of the Secondary Handbook and in like fashion on page 17 of the Code of Student Conduct, which suggests that students are not to have their cellphones visible except under the direct supervision of a classroom teacher.
Okay. And that will be voted on this evening. All right. We also have to, a couple of comments that I would just give, updates, some things that I'm enthusiastic about from conversations in the community. We have an opportunity for a GRASP grant. GRASP is an organization that looks to provide a financial aid counselor for high school students, looking at the opportunities that are out there, not only through the financial aid form and completion of the financial aid form, but also looking at local grants that are available and the writing process and so many things. This would be one, a person available, like the community college currently makes career coaches available a couple of days a week. This would be a person that would be identified that, by the GRASP organization, that would work with our students, one at Bluestone and one at Parkview High Schools. And I will give you updates on that, but I'm enthusiastic. I'll be meeting with them again next week with Final. They're actually raising money to support this person now. And I'll be giving you more detail, but I think it will be a great addition for our schools. There are a few communities in Virginia that currently have it. And it was brought to my attention by a local citizen who had worked with the College Board for a number of years and saw how effective it was and wanted to see it once he retired coming back in this area. So I'm enthusiastic about that. I'm also enthusiastic because I had a meeting today with Microsoft and Mid-Atlantic Broadband. Microsoft last year had made a commitment to helping expand the robotics program from the high school down into the middle school. And Mid-Atlantic Broadband is also making a commitment of financial contribution to support that program. And that would put us in a position that we can move some of the Connex robotics into the elementary schools, have the next level at the middle school, and then move into the full first robotics at the high school level. So our goal is that with this support from those organizations, we'll be able to put that into place this fall. And we're very enthusiastic about that.
Would that just be at Bluestone?
No, yes, that will just be at Bluestone High School because the robotics currently is there. But then, once we merge the schools, then everybody will have access to it. And that's my comments and report for this evening. Mr. Chairman?
Well, I don't have any remarks at this time, so we'll go on to the committee reports. The Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee, is there a report?
I don't have anything.
Okay. The Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met today at 5:00. We reviewed the bills, and we have other recommendations for several of our action items this evening. Thank you.
Okay. A School Safety Committee?
I don't have anything to say.
All right. Gifted Talented Special Ed Health and Family Committee, there's no report there. CTE and Career Technical Education Committee, Mr. Cypher's?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, School Board Members. Tonight, I would like to ask for you all to review and also for action as well tonight. We currently have 60 iPads. They're very old iPads, and we would like to request to surplus those iPads so we can put that funds towards purchasing some newer ones that will be more effective. We have several teachers that we took to an Apple training with us earlier this year and all of the different applications and things that we saw that they wanted to use. Unfortunately, they did not work on the old iPads, so we would like to request that you all review and also for approval tonight. It's currently 60 iPads. It's 30 at Bluestone High School and 30 at Parkview High School.
How do you surplus those?
I talked with Ms. Hatcher, and we have gotten several quotes from some different companies to do a buyback with them. So then we would take those funds and put towards purchasing new iPads. And I know ours is listed under CTE surplus. I know Mr. Dalton mentioned earlier. I don't know how it's listed for his, for that.
I think it's all under the same one. Is there another surplus on here?
Yeah, TV, the televisions, remember, TVs?
Which letter is it? The only, yeah, the only surplus item on here is the CTE surplus.
Yes, sir. I think ours got left out of the action item. Please, y'all, we can do it at Monday night.
All right, can we, what's that? Okay. Yeah, I guess we'll have to wait till then because I don't see it on here.
Did you all have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cypher's? The Athletics Committee?
Yes, athletics, what's going on right now? Even though school is out, we have cheer, volleyball, and football already starting to work. Schools have a basketball, I believe they're even doing basketball conditioning. So even though school is out, you know, the cheer, volleyball, and football are ramping up for the upcoming season. So it's almost year-round now.
Great. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, the Instruction Committee?
I don't, I have, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I overlooked the fact that with the timing issue, if questions could be asked, maybe we could vote on that this coming Monday night as well.
What's that?
School day.
School day for the students so that we can get that information out and get the instructional people ready for the school day and have time to be able to work on that through July.
Okay, so the school day and the surplus, the media surplus. Okay. Now we are to public input. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No one has signed up tonight.
All right, that brings us to our action items tonight. All right, may I have, on the regular school board meeting from the minutes from the May 17th, special-held meeting, I'm sorry. May I have an action that the school board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on May 7, 2018?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to the school board meeting, regular school board meeting held May 21st, may I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on May 21, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Abstain.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. So we had five yeses. Okay. Now, may I have a motion that the school board approves the payment of the bills?
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee met this evening, and we suggest that we do pay the bills as they were presented.
All right, I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee that the school board approves the payment of the bills. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Personnel. May I have a motion that the school board approves the personnel recommendations?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In reference to policy GCBA-R, may I have a motion that the school board approves policy GCBA-R?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Abstain.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, the policy update. I have a motion that the school board approves the policy updates to policy GAA.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the school board approves the Title 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 federal program applications?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call?
Discuss?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, Mrs. Rogers. You said the reason why we're doing this is soon again. I'm sorry.
The title for tonight is that they should know that the DOE guides July 1, and then once they did the actual allocation later in the year, around September, then we will have the Title V. And even though we transfer the money, we have to have the Title IV application separately from Title V.
Okay, so that's not available until, when did you say?
It's all the Board Docs. It's just all it says is that we're transferring the money to Title V.
Okay.
But it was added today to Board Docs.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood.
Sure, sure. All right, well, roll call. I believe I have a motion in a second already. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the school board deems the CTE iPad surplus?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the Bluestone High School YADAPP overnight field trip to Longwood University in Farmville, Virginia, July 16 through 20th, 2018 be approved?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In reference to the Student Code of Conduct and Attendance, I have a motion that the school board approves the updates to the Student Code of Conduct and Attendance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. This is the, with this code of conduct, there's been a lot of discussion on it. Many people for, many people against. Me personally, the students are our customers, and we should be looking for opportunities to have an environment that helps them as well. I do understand the concerns of the administrators who say that due to overcrowding, there's a tripping hazard. I don't think there's been anything presented as far as safety, as far as kids bringing anything into the schools in a backpack because the policy is going to state they still can bring the backpacks. They simply have to put them in the locker room. So our guess is an issue of overcrowding, having the book bags on the floor that poses a tripping hazards for staff. As well as the cellphone policy. I think the policy is going to state that children can bring it to school but not use it unless under the instruction. There's been a lot of feedback that the students should have an opportunity to use their cellphones at designated times, which they don't currently have. One of those places could be in the cafeteria. Whatever the pleasure of the board is, but I know there's a strong belief in the community that these kids who choose to carry their books should have an opportunity so they don't have to constantly go to the locker after every class or when they go from the gym, that they can carry their belongings in an orderly fashion and not in their arms. So based on the input, and with all due respect to the administrators, my opinion that because of that, I cannot support the current code of conduct as written.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to point out also that in addition to cellphones, the Fitbits or Apple Watches or whatever you may have synced to your phone, it's, the Student Code of Conduct and Handbook would prohibit their use during the school day as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to say that I appreciate what Mr. Sturdivan said. Our students are our customers. But I think we talked about in that last special, when we had that special open meeting a few weeks ago, we had brought it up or talked a little bit about it. And my concern is a safety issue. And the point of, I would rather do something now than later. And our administrators are in the building every day. Our teachers are in the classrooms with the students every day, and they have to, they've got a lot to do every day. And I commend them for the job that they do. And I wouldn't be doing my job And I commend them for the job that they do, and I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't support their recommendations. So I appreciate all the feedback from everybody, and I'm glad Dr. Mattney went and was able to poll all of the administrators and talked with them to see what their needs were, and I, I believe we're moving in the right direction by listening to our administrators.
All right, anyone else? Now, did we have a motion in a second? Did you get that motion in second on that already?
Yes.
Okay, so I just need a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Sturdivan?
No.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Reference to the secondary handbook, may I have a motion that the school board approves the updates to the secondary handbook?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In reference to the school lunch price increase, may I have a motion that the board, school board approves the school lunch price increase?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee is making a recommendation, recommendation that we support the school lunch price increase.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In reference to the alternative education projects, may I have a motion that the school board approves the participation in the 2018-2019 alternative education projects?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee is making that recommendation that we support that project.
Okay, any discussion on that? All right, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee that we support the alternative education projects. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In reference to student discipline matter, SD 20172018-14, do I have a motion that the school board supports the Discipline Committee's recommendation regarding student discipline, SD 20172018-14, to place a high school student at the Alternative Education Learning Center for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year and for the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year? Mr. Ritchie?
Mr. Ritchie, that's.
Motion to?
Yeah, somebody's going to move to postpone it?
Yes, to postpone it to a future date.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards to postpone the vote on that matter, and a second from Mr. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain. And now, student matter, SM 20172018-17, may I have a motion that the school board approves the request to allow a student to attend an out-of-county school?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. The 2019 budget, may I have a motion that the school board approves the 2019 budget?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Reminders. Let's see. July 4th is Independence Day holiday, July 5th, the offices are closed, and July 16th is our regular school board meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
And we have a special board meeting next Monday night.
And we have a special board meeting Monday.
To deal with final bills.
So we'll have, we will, there'll be some action items on that.
There will be some action items. Monday night, 6 o'clock.
Monday night at 6 o'clock.
And a closed session as well.
Yeah, both an opening, it's beginning at 6 o'clock.
So, Mr. Chairman, Monday morning, the 25th, all of the final bills should be posted by then, so that everyone will be available on your board docs prior to that meeting Monday night, but it won't be there before.
Okay, they'll be there by, by Monday morning. All right, board member remarks. Mr. Honeycutt, do you have any remarks?
I'm sorry?
Board member remarks, do you have any closing remarks?
Um, no.
Mr. Palmer?
I just want to commend, as Mr. Honeycutt has said, the principals for getting into the trenches and making recommendations of different policies in their schools. I've been there, I've done that, and I know that these book bags and all can cause problems. We've had them to be stationed in the doorway of going into the cafeteria with students stumbling over them, so I commend you for bringing this to us and hope we have helped you out.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Two items. I, I'd just like to thank this board for addressing a problem that we were addressed with, a lot of accusations about our committees and how they were run, and I think after our meeting, we all kind of agreed that the Athletic Committee had basically done the right thing, and I just want to say that it's good we stick behind our committees when they make decisions, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. The second thing is, we get these fictitious letters that are sent to us that talk about a lot of things and talk about people in our, but nobody signs them. If anybody has anything that they, that if they have a problem and they want to talk about something, the last, the last sentence in this thing said, please, members, be accountable and get a backbone. I got one, I'm up here. If you have something to say, call me, step up to that podium, but don't just write a letter and not put your name on it, because it really doesn't do any good. The only thing it does is, creates trash and garbage, because we can't do anything about it, all we, you got is, it spoke for all the concerned voters of Mecklenburg County, but I hadn't seen any of them that complained about this, so. I just want to say, if you have a problem, address it to a school board member or walk up to the podium and lay it on us, because we can take it. We're big people, we have a backbone, but if, you know, just, please, if you have a concern, that's the way to do it, not with a letter with no signature. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to thank, again, publicly, South Hill United Methodist Church for their sheep program, and it's, it's phenomenal that, what they do there, and I want to thank South Hill Elementary for partnering with them and being able to help 14 young children pass all their SOLs, their fifth grade year. And I just want to thank those volunteers, and gee, it looks like I might have something to do on Monday through Thursday afternoons, when I'm not following my kids around to, to whatever activity there. Well, just one kid at home after this year.
Wow.
It's pretty remarkable. And I do also want to thank all of the behind-the-scenes work that gets done during the summer months in this building, especially preparing for another academic year, all the dots that need to go on I's and the crosses on T's, and this work is important as well, and it sets the framework for everything that, that we do from August until May. I want to thank Mr. Nichols for all the, the work you're doing in the community with raising support for our new buildings and our corporate support that we're going to need with mentorships and internships for our students to get some real hands-on experience before they leave school, so that they'll have a real idea of, of what the workforce is like and, and how they have to carry themselves and behave and do a job well done, and that's what we're here for, to provide them that type of education. And I think summer is here officially today with 95 degrees. Everyone stay cool until August, and thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
I got a couple things I want to mention tonight. First of all, I want to say that I agree with Mr. Edwards on the letter that we all